Good evening and welcome to the School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, June 3, 2020. Once again, we are coming to you remotely. First order of business tonight is approval of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes. The first is the business meeting from May 27. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Thank you, Mara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous. We also have minutes from executive session on May 27. During that executive session, it was just the four of us. Ms. Smith was not in that executive session. Motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Maya. Seconded by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For a extension?
Okay.
Four, zero to one. Thank you so much. Moving right along, Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Do not, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Mr. Katania, I believe you told me earlier, we do not have any warrants that you sign, correct?
Correct. There were no warrants.
Okay. So next on our agenda is public forum. I am checking the email address that we have set up for public forum. At this time, I do not see any emails, but just as a reminder to the public, you can email us at any time at NPSchoolcommittee@norwood.k12.ma.us. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, June 17, and anything we receive in between now and then, I will read at public forum on the 17th. At this time, any announcements, Dr. Thompson?
No, I'll save those for my super test report, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. So we do have a number of appearances this evening. We have Mr. Quigley, who is going to be sharing with us a school health council update and also the update at wellness policy. We have the principals tonight from the Oldham, Callahan, and Willitt and LMPA joining us. And then we do have another appearance that on our agendas is listed under new business. But if the school committee is okay with it, I would like to pull that up under appearances so that our guests tonight from the May Center Institute don't have to stay with us for majority of the meeting. So I would like to have them go after the improvement plan from the Willitt. Is that okay with the committee?
Follow me.
All right, great. So first guest is Mr. Quigley.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me and see me okay?
We can. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Thank you very much for having me. And you know, truthfully, on behalf of the entire school health council, thank you for giving me and giving the group the opportunity this evening to talk with you about our work this year. You know, before, we went into an extended school closure, but also, you know, our work since the school closure occurred, as well as what our plans are for, you know, for the future, starting in the fall. Well, you know, the entire district has a lot of work ahead of itself. We know that, given the unique circumstances. So we're looking forward to continuing and really initiating some of the ideas and the work that the council had discussed and worked on over the course of this year. But most importantly, obviously, you know, discussing the draft proposal of the updated wellness policy with the committee. I'd like to, if I may, I'm going to try to share my screen with you just to give you a little bit of a background of sort of how we got here and some of the work we've done this year. So I'm going to try to do that right now. I've done it successfully before. So we'll see if this works. Everybody's getting a lot of practice with virtual Google Hangouts. All right. Can everybody see the screen? Can everybody see my screen right now?
Not yet. There it is. It's coming.
Okay. Should say Norwood Public Schools School Health Council 2019-2020?
Be good.
Yes.
Okay. So just again, just a little bit of background on the work the group has done to date, as well as, you know, some of our anticipated, you know, work in the future. When we first got together in September, our purpose and our mission was to reestablish or if you will resurrect the school health council, its membership. You know, get the group back together, start discussing some ideas, look at the current policy and really sort of dive into that current existing policy, the things that were accurate, areas for improvement, and as a group, how we could move forward in promoting overall wellness for not just our students of the Norwood Public Schools, but also for the families and the community at large. We also wanted to review the current wellness policy and propose the updated version for you folks this evening for the policy manual. And we also wanted to facilitate some wellness activities and/or events for the schools and the community. Needless to say, with the unexpected sudden school closure, the wellness activities, the community events did not take place. But I think moving forward, that's absolutely going to be one of the top priorities for the council. I definitely need to acknowledge all of the members who put some great time and effort into our work this year. I'm the current Wellness Department Chair for grades six through 12. Chair Stewart was also on the committee. Paul Nimblett is a Cokely Middle School Wellness Teacher. Donna, I don't want to mispronounce her name, so I'm going to say Donna T. Toig, representing the nurses in the district. Eli Norris and Kelsey Masses, both representing the Norwood Public Schools Food Services. And then Aubrey Seal, we all know very well as, you know, she does tremendous work with Impact Norwood in facilitating those opportunities for our kids in the community. So those are the current members of the group. You know, moving forward, we absolutely would like to expand our membership to make sure we're taking in all of the ideas and thoughts from all of the community stakeholders. We had four meetings this year, in September and November of 2019, and then February and April. Our April meeting was remote due to the pandemic. And just quickly, some of the accomplishments. We have a draft wellness policy proposal for you this evening to review and hopefully vote on. And in terms of future plans, we look to make just recommendations. Again, I think it's important to point out, our council, the work of this council is by no means a policymaking group. It's really just trying to make some solid recommendations to the Norwood administrative team, teachers, and you as school committee members regarding continued opportunities to improve the overall wellness of our students. And again, getting back to some of those possibilities and opportunities to host and facilitate community wellness events in the future. So that's sort of just a really quick recap of our work this year and our intentions for the future. A lot of variables still at play. I'm going to... Are we good? Are we still? Looks so good. Okay. My apologies.
Ryan, I don't think we can hear you anymore. And I see two of you now for some reason. I don't know if everybody else sees too, Ryan.
How does it sound now?
It sounds better.
Better. Sorry about that. So really, without, you know, any further ado, you know, I'm absolutely, you know, here to entertain and discuss the draft that was put forward to the committee. I know there were some questions and just some clarifications that members of the school committee wanted to address. So feel free to start that discussion. Hopefully, I can answer some questions you may have and clarify some things.
Thank you, Mr. Quigley. So everybody in the committee, you should see in the packet, you know, the current draft, which I know Ryan made some additional minor edits yesterday based off of some of the questions and feedback that the committee shared, you know, Dr. Thompson. But there is also the current wellness policy draft in your Google folders as well if you wanted to see, you know, the policy before the school council started to edit it and work on it. Are there specific questions or, you know, parts of the policy that you wanted to discuss further tonight with Ryan? Yeah, Maya?
So it looks like some of my questions have already been addressed a little bit, that the part about celebrations and rewards, it's clarified now that it's during the school day.
Sure.
So I think I have no problem with it as written now. And then my only question is, and I don't have an, I want to be clear, I don't have an answer that I'm looking for here. I just want to understand what the goal of this policy is. In terms of food and beverage marketing in schools, I understand how that applies to like specific foods. But, you know, a lot of our, like, the Parents' Music Association does a fundraiser where it's like, you know, go to Bertucci's tonight and present this flyer and you can, you know, they'll contribute a portion to our fundraiser. So I'm just wondering, how does it, how does it work if we're like, if it's not advertising for a specific food, but it's advertising for a restaurant that probably has some things that meet the USDA requirements and a number of things that don't? Just curious what you think this policy would mean?
Yeah. And it's a great, a great question. And thank you for asking for that clarification, because I think, number one, you know, all of those types of events and activities, you know, I'm just finishing up really my first full year in Norwood. I've been here for a year and a half of my first full year. And I will tell you, those events that you mentioned and some of the other ones that we know exist, they're really part of the fabric, right, of a student's experience. It really doesn't matter whether it's at the elementary, middle school, or high school level. Those evening extracurricular events are really important. So by no means, you know, in my opinion, and I'm going to speak for the council, the other members of the council, do we want to interfere or limit those opportunities? Really, you know, in essence, start to micromanage those opportunities, not by any stretch of the imagination. Interestingly enough, Kelsey Masses was able to sort of clarify that question in particular and for the USDA 30 minutes before and then 30 minutes after the school day. So those afternoon-evening events, believe it or not, you know, Massachusetts doesn't have any specific regulations regarding those events. They, the State Department of Public Health, as always, is giving recommendations and sort of guidance, but by no means, are there any regulations that we have to abide by when it comes to those events? So I guess that was sort of a long-winded answer in terms of, I don't envision those things being affected at all with this policy.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Are there questions or feedback from other committee members at this time? If you compare the old policy to the draft before us tonight, you'll see that there was some additional topics added into the wellness policy. So we just want the community to understand, you know, some of the work that we did as a school health council was to really get in there. You know, that mental health piece, the SEL piece, and the staff wellness piece. So the last two sections of the current policy that is being proposed tonight are brand new. Those weren't in the previous draft at all. But how would the committee like to proceed? Are there any edits that you would like, Mr. Quigley, to work on? Or are we ready to vote on the updated policy tonight? Yeah, John?
I thought it was clear. I think the improvements are needed and good. And so I would like to motion to approve the policy as written.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that motion? I'll second. Thank you, Maya. Mara, was there something that you wanted to say? Were you just seconding it?
I was just seconding.
Okay. So any further discussion at this time? All right. All in favor of the updated wellness policies presented tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quigley, for your time and for all that you are doing. And I know there's some other initiatives that you were working on that we will see you back again at some point. But hopefully, we'll be back in person by then and not doing this remote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much again for the opportunity. Great to see everybody. Continue to be well, and we'll talk to you soon. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Nice work. Thank you.
Take care.
Bye. All right. So moving right along to our next appearance, the Oldham School Improvement Plan for one year. And we do have two guests tonight, Mr. Griffin, who is the interim principal at the Oldham, and then also Mr. Olson, who has recently been hired to be the principal of the Oldham for the next school year. Dr. Thompson, was there anything that you wanted to share with us before we handed over to Mr. Griffin and Mr. Olson?
Well, I can probably, I'll try to, yeah, I want to, I want to, two things. First of all, I want to thank Bob for his work this year. He came in, he, you know, took over the reins of a school. We pulled him out of retirement. We didn't have to tug too hard. We pulled him out of retirement. He came in with a skip and a jump and really helped us out. And again, brought his expertise. I know that our new administrators really enjoy the opportunity to work with. What, I scared him away? Oh, there he is. I scared you away, Bob. But I'm truly grateful for all of your work, Bob, and your leadership. And it's been absolutely a pleasure to have the opportunity to work with you. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And then I also want to welcome Mr. Olson. We had, we had a good search, but we struck gold, in my opinion. I'm really looking forward to what Steve is going to bring to our team and bring to the Oldham. And we welcome him as well. So without further ado, I will get out of the way and let the school improvement plan get presented.
Thank you for the kind words. And as I said many times, I haven't regretted this move once since I, once I came back last August. The staff and the kids and the parents and the administration have all treated me wonderfully. And I thank you all. I'm so glad I did it. It re-energized me. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyeth. I am here to review the school improvement plan of the Oldham School as written by me last summer. I will begin by reviewing the three goals that were identified on the 1920 plan. The first area that I identified as an area that needed improvement involved the MCAS Grade 5 Science results from 2019. While analyzing those results, I became concerned that the fact that only 44% of that class either met or exceeded the state's standards. And I also looked back and saw some volatile fluctuations in their scores over the past four years. So I called on our elementary science coordinator, Erica Lockwood, and I strategized with her how to best promote more time and energy into our science program at all five grade levels. Our first objective was to utilize a very interesting online daily newsletter that is called Newzella, N-E-W-S-E-L-A. This, it's a, third, fourth, and fifth graders enjoy reading at current events article, but there's also two really interesting and two very, two very interesting social studies and two very interesting science articles every single day. And we decided to capitalize on the student interest by asking the third, fourth, and fifth graders to find time to at least cover one of the science articles. And grade fives would try to find time to cover both science articles every day or as often as possible. We also prioritized the science journal writing that the children's do after our science lessons. When our first and second graders were involved, we suggested that they might, they might use an ad project or a class discussion if they hadn't got to the point of writing their journals yet. Now, it needs to be explained that although the science articles are always interesting, they don't necessarily align with the concepts that our curriculum outlines for a particular grade level. Our plan, however, involved piquing the children's interests in all aspects of science. In other words, a student who enjoys a particular subject will carry this interest into all facets of that subject. If a fourth grade article is about a rocket launch, but that's not, that's not the topic of that particular grade level, we say, so what? Encourage the enjoyment of the rocket launch, because eventually, it all comes full cycle and the students will carry over the same interest for plants, astronomy, electricity, machines, or even rocks. Then the journal writing and the drawings would supplement those lessons. With the cancellation of the MCAS testing this spring, we were unable to retrieve the hard data that we wanted. But we were especially disappointed because our current fifth graders scored 80% meeting or exceeding the standards last year. And math and science scores often go hand in hand. We know, however, that we did everything necessary to whet their appetites for all things science at the school. Number two, on the progress section of the plan, identified the implementation of the Renaissance Online Assessment Program for grades three, four, and five in math and ELA. Our district provided plenty of PD, identified two trainers from each elementary school, and contracted for seven face-to-face online meetings with Renaissance personnel whenever necessary. It's a program that's working quite smoothly for us now. And number three on the progress portion was a search for a new elementary reading program. ELA Coordinator Stephanie West chose three popular programs and distributed them to all schools, different schools at different grade levels. Mrs. West organized four major meetings throughout the year to hear strengths and weaknesses of all three programs. My View from the Pearson Company was chosen as the reading series that best met the needs of our district. Priority areas for 2021, 2022. Number one, obvious, in my opinion, would be to continue with the science priority. We really haven't had the chance to look at the hard data from what, from what we implemented last year. And I'm confident that it's, that it's going to improve. But I think because we didn't have a chance to actually look at that and analyze the results of that yet, that that would be a continued priority next year. Number two, we'll be rolling out the My View Reading Program. All materials have arrived in the schools. I have them all divided by grade level and laid out on the cafeteria tables. Stephanie West will conduct her first professional development on, this Friday, June 5, 10:30 for grades K to 2 and 12:30 for grades three, four, and five. I felt that the new Oldham Principal, Steve Olson, who I believe is here with us this evening, and now I know who he is, should be able to implement his goals for the coming year. So I generously left him priorities three and four. And I welcome you, Steve, and I assure you that you are going to love being the principal of the Oldham School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Feels like a baton passing moment. I appreciate it, Mr. Griffin. I heard great things about the work that you did. So thank you.
Bob, please, and we'll be in touch tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any questions or comments from the school committee members on the school improvement plan for the next year? For the first two priorities for the Oldham? Yeah, Dave?
Hi, Teresa. Mr. Griffin, really, thank you so much. You were fantastic to have as a principal. And we really appreciate everything you've done for the community and the students while you were in, you know, it feels like we just had you come on so like last week, and time flies. But we're really grateful for everything you've done. So thank you again.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. As I said earlier, I meant to, I meant it, I loved the kids, the staff. Everybody was wonderful to me over there.
Great. Any further comments on the school improvement plan? Or is there a motion to approve it? Mara?
Yep, motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. Wonderful. Mr. Olson, not to put you on the spot, you can, you can say, I'm good. But is there anything that you would like to share with us tonight? Since this is our first opportunity to see you and get to know you a little bit more?
Yes, thanks for the opportunity. I'm just really excited to join the community. I've been hearing a lot of great things, and I'm talking to folks who live there and who've been through the school system, in my own social circles, and doing all the research that I needed to do. It became a more and more appealing position. So I was really excited to be offered it. And I think that I do have some of the skills that are needed to move the work that Mr. Griffin, Bob, started with the staff and the staff has been doing. So I'm excited to get in there and at least remotely on video, hopefully physically soon, and start to see what's going on and see where we can really move things forward and really help to make the things that are going great stay great. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I know we'll be speaking a lot more.
Well, thank you and welcome. Did the committee have any questions for Mr. Olson at this time? No? All right. Well, Mr. Olson and Mr. Griffin, thank you so much for your time this evening. And stay well.
Thank you. Stay well.
Thank you.
So moving right along to our next improvement plan is Mrs. Brown presenting the one-year school improvement plan for the Callahan. How are you, Mrs. Brown?
Good. How are you? So, good evening, members of the school committee, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyeth, and Mrs. Sheridan. It is with great pleasure that I share information pertaining to our current school improvement plan, as well as the goals for our one-year plan. I only did two goals this year, so I'm going to have Bob do grades, goals three and four. Just kidding. We made great strides in meeting the action steps of our previous plan despite our abrupt departure to remote learning. I'm proud of the work we have done to meet the needs of all learners through differentiated instruction, station rotations, and small group targeted instruction. We have seen tremendous growth in decoding skills from students in grades one and two with the addition of our foundations program. Our progress is also noted in our school accountability data provided by DESI, where we went from 41% to 96% in terms of the criterion reference targets set by DESI for our school. And that table is in our current school improvement plan for next year. Strengthening our professional learning community occurred in a number of different initiatives. Our new block schedule allowed for weekly common planning time, which the other principals alluded to. And this was done with a cross-section of participants. Staff engaged in discussions pertaining to an array of topics promoting a positive collaborative culture that had a direct impact on student growth and learning. Unfortunately, a number of our learning celebrations did not occur when we went to a remote learning situation. Safety of our students and staff has always been a focus at the Callahan, and we are continually reviewing and updating our procedures in this area. As you know, social-emotional initiatives have continued at the Callahan and with a response to intervention model in grades one and two that was extremely effective. We implemented a number of SEL programs, such as the Zones of Regulation, Collaborative Problem Solving, and PBIS, Positive Behavioral Incentive Systems. Staff meetings were centered around our fourth goal, which was standard-based information and skills, and this transferred into our classroom. Our proposed plan for the next school year align, involves four priority areas that are aligned to the district's strategic plan. These areas include, number one, instructional practices; number two, implementing the newly adopted ELA curriculum; number three, continuing with social-emotional learning; and number four is culturally responsive practices. For our first priority area, we will continue the work we started this year to expand and improve upon our instructional practices. We are committed to providing differentiation, small group instruction, peer collaboration, and project-based learning experiences. Intervention is a key component to meeting the needs of all students, and we will continue with collaboration between staff, as well as data collection that will be reviewed and used to drive our instruction. We hope to expand our flexible seating options, but know that this may be on hold based upon our current situation. Our STEM initiative as part of the library experience is a highlight for many of our students. Mr. Ruland has created a true project-based learning environment, and we will continue this in both an in-person and an online platform. This year, he even started a coding club on Monday for students. So he is up and running whether we're in-person or online. Our next goal pertains to the newly adopted ELA curriculum, which is what many of the other schools have also done. And as Bob mentioned, Stephanie is already having PD this week, and we anticipate that the majority of our initial common planning meetings will revolve around this topic. Once again, social-emotional learning will be a focus for our learning community. Our sensory path was a huge hit, and we hope to recreate this when we return to school. We will be using a new PBIS model. We will be using a new PBIMSS model, which was actually shared with us by a behavioral consultant that Lori Semino had for our task program and we loved it so much that we wanted to extend it school-wide. It's known as HI5, where five stands for flexible, in the zone, valuing others, and becoming an excellent citizen. This can be rolled out in either in-person or remotely. We hope to expand our student leadership opportunities and our community service projects. Finally, we will be introducing trauma-informed teaching practices to our staff so that we are prepared to recognize and respond to those who have been impacted by traumatic stress. This will be a major focus given our current situation. Our school adjustment counselors have been working and participating in a number of workshops over the past two months and have actually created a Callahan Crisis Team Drive where they are putting different documents that our staff and our crisis team have been reviewing. And our last area that we would like to work on is culturally responsive practices. We are extremely proud of our diverse community and want to make sure that all of our families are informed and welcomed at our school. Most recently, and I know it's not on my school improvement plan, but my school adjustments counselor sent me the DESI MTSS Academy Applications, which is multi-tiered system of support, and we did apply for culturally responsive teaching academy. We don't know if we will be chosen and then Margot also found it and she found that there's a teaching academy, a leadership, culturally responsive leadership academy. So I think as a district, that is one goal that we are hoping to really promote. And that is my update and I thank you for your time and I welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Brown. Feedback, questions from the committee for the Callahan Improvement Plan? No? Mara? Oh, I thought you raised your hand, sorry. I'm just going to call you out all night long, Mara, since it's my last chance to do so, okay?
Somebody should. It's my last, I'm going to keep you on my toes.
Mrs. Brown, I mean, are you sharing something?
No, I just said my, I think she was just waving.
Oh, okay. So is there a motion to approve a Callahan one-year school improvement plan?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mara. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Joan. Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
Great. So up next is Ms. Robyn, sharing with us the one-year school improvement plan for both the Willet and the LMPA. Welcome, Ms. Robyn. How are you tonight?
Fine. How are you? Thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm going to share my screen as I have a couple of slides that'll just help us walk through my presentation for the evening. I know sometimes it can be helpful to have a visual when you've been listening for a long time, so here we go. Okay, so this is the early childhood school improvement plan that covers the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy and the Willet. We are a one-year plan. So I just wanted to start with some demographic points of interest and I also want to address some of the questions that were sort of previously submitted from the school committee throughout my presentation, so this is one area where I'll be able to do that. So for the Willet kindergarten, just an enrollment update for fall of 2020, although that's not really technically in our improvement plan. I know Mrs. Stewart was interested in hearing about this. We have two hundred and fifty-three students registered as of today for kindergarten. Historical data tells us we can anticipate twenty to forty more registrations over the summer, meaning a cohort size of two seventy to two ninety. So we seem like we're sort of heading to that mean cohort size, which is two hundred and eighty-two. So a typically sized kindergarten hopefully coming to us in the fall. One demographic I like to pull out is just that continually growing EL population. Kindergarten is our first opportunity to be able to see what an entire cohort of students looks like in terms of percentages of limited English deficiencies. So you can see that we are, while we had a little dip last year, we are on an upward trajectory in terms of our EL students. What's, so that's twenty-eight percent of our students are receiving services for ESL. Another interesting point though is that even though this represents who our LEPs are, it does, it doesn't speak to the fact that forty-six percent of our population reports that there is a language other than English spoken in the home. So almost half of our families have a second language spoken in their home. So I think that's just an important demographic to continue to monitor as we go through the years here. For the LMPA preschool, I just wanted to point out a few things here. So our total enrollment, so this was another question that came up. Going into the fall, we anticipate one hundred and thirty-five students with seventy-four peers and sixty-one students on, sixty-one plus students on IEPs. The plus is there because we're in a limbo a little bit right now with some of our early intervention referrals due to the fact that we haven't been able to have all the, do all the evaluations and have the meetings necessary to be able to get them qualified or not qualified for our we've had in our program already and we anticipate another eleven to twelve between now and September. I'd like to just note that you can see that the enrollment is going up as a preschool. That one thirty-five number is actually quite concerning both to myself and Ms. Kai in the sense that we ended our school year or we, or I shouldn't say we've ended our school year, we're not quite there yet, but we, we right now have a hundred and forty students in our preschool. And the only way we've been able to accommodate that growth is you'll notice that we start in October, usually around one oh five, one ten. Last year, we saw an increase to one twenty-two. This year, we're going to see an increase to one thirty-five. And what that means is we are looking at a fall semester in which we do not have room for our three-year-olds who are going to be aging into our program. So that is a concern that we have, but we are going to do the best we can with that as we move forward. Another interesting point is that PACS enrollment has gone up. I apologize, that little bar is coming up here. So our PACS are severe students with significant disabilities, typically autism spectrum disorder. We went from one section that by the end of two thousand eighteen nineteen was full at ten to two sections that were almost full at, for this year and then going into starting next year. Again, we're looking at starting those two sections full and full for sub-separate in preschool is nine students per section. So we can have eighteen students in PACS total. So I just want to kind of point that out, that our autism population is growing in leaps and bounds and the level of need for our special needs students in LMPA continues to increase significantly. So that means we have to provide more services and more programming for those students who are coming to us. Okay, so some updates from our school improvement plan from last year. So we had a similar goal with the ELA pilot, but also strengthening our foundations. So we had an ELA goal. The LMPA and Willet continue to refine their phonics practices. We had a second full year of foundations implementation and it is continuing to serve our students quite well. At the preschool, all of our four-year-olds get a pretty thorough introduction to foundations and three-year-olds have exposure to it as well. At the kindergarten level, we are full force with our kindergarten foundations and our data is looking really great. Unfortunately, we can't do our end-of-the-year data catch like we normally would, but our mid-year data looked quite good with most of our students knowing their letters and sounds and that is a real tribute to foundations, but also the faithful and skillful implementation by the staff at the Willet. Six Willet teachers participated in the ELA pilot. There were three programs, as you've heard before. We've chosen My View. I will say that My View of the three programs probably was not the preferred for kindergarten and first grade. However, we are confident, I am confident, that we are going to be able to do the work necessary to make some adjustments to the program to make it feel a little bit more appropriate for kindergarten. Stephanie West has put a proposal in to have some summer work around doing that work with some of the teachers at the Willet, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. It's a solid program. I don't have any concerns about it. We just have to do a little bit of tweaking to make it appropriate for kindergarten students. And then to echo what my colleagues said, we're going to have a, our first PD on that on June 5th. We had an SEO goal, which was to strengthen our open circle practices. So all of our teachers got a refresher training in January of two thousand twenty and the few who hadn't gotten the full kit and kaboodle got going with that as well, the three-day training. And we are implementing open circle weekly in our classrooms. LMPA, there is no preschool version of open circle, so LMPA has done a staff-created SEL monthly theme calendar. The theme is introduced in an all-school meeting by the SLP and carried through in the classroom through various projects and activities and a monthly newsletter goes home to LMPA families. And I'd really like to give a shout out to Michelle McCarthy, the SLP at the LMPA for really jazzing up those school, all-school meetings and also to Emily Kai, the head teacher there, who supports that work and also writes that newsletter each month. And then this past year, I was able to introduce the concept of becoming trauma-informed to most of the staff. I was able to do a two-hour workshop with all LMPA staff, so professional and paraprofessional and then the paraprofessional staff at the Willet. Unfortunately, I didn't get around to doing it with the kindergarten teachers, teaching staff, the professional staff, because we just ran out of half-day PDs and they had other PD obligations that they had on some of those other days. We had a goal for engaging diverse families. We did a new event this year that was new for us, which was to host a parent-only evening to learn more about the backgrounds and experiences of the families in our school district. We had about ten parents who participate, participated, which I, in addition to our school council who was there and I thought that was a pretty good turnout and it was very interesting to hear some of their perspectives about school in Norwood. And then we had planned to do our second annual family cultural night. We did our first one last year and it was amazing, but unfortunately, that was one of those things that's gone by the wayside with school closure. Hopefully, we can do it again next year. And then our final priority was technology inventory. We inventoried our existing technology and identified two areas for expansion. LMPA would like smart boards, smart boards and projectors for their classrooms. They do not have them. All the Willet does and all the elementary schools do, but LMPA does not. And then the Willet would like to increase the number of iPads so each classroom can have six to eight devices for use in tech-based learning centers for independent practice and reinforcement of ELA and math skills. So those have been included in the capital outlay request, so those are all just pending funding. So our priorities for this one-year plan are, we are going to, the first one is the ELA. So just like all of my colleagues have stated before me, we are going to be part of the training and implementation of My View. So that training starts Friday and then we have a full day training on September 1st and we're looking forward to digging into that new curriculum. Priority area number two, we are going to continue to strengthen our practices in social emotional learning with a focus on mentor texts. So I've already been able to purchase some pretty extensive classroom libraries for the Willet that will support, that came from the recommended book list from Open Circle. So we have already have those on order and hopefully going to be delivered soon. So we're going to be able to expand how we talk about SEL by really linking it back to high-quality mentor texts. And I hope to do something similar for LMPA. We need to identify some texts that match those SEL monthly topics and hopefully be able to get those for those classrooms as well. And then finally, I chose to have a priority area focused specifically on flexible models of instruction for COVID-19. So, remote learning has its challenges for everybody. It is particularly challenging at the early childhood level when you consider that all learning at that age and stage requires a lot of adult support and a lot of adult facilitation. So I want to make sure that we are continuously thinking about what we are going to do in order to support families with remote learning, but also if we have to be in a remote learning situation, but also how we can flex in and out of models. My hope actually, my sort of thought and philosophy around this for early childhood is to try to minimize the amount of remote that we have to do. Obviously, that is dependent upon conditions on the ground, but my hope is that if we are site-based even for part of the time, that that is the time that we're going to maximize with students and remote learning will be a much smaller piece for our younger kids than it is for our older kids. That's not to try to say I want to minimize the amount of, you know, the expectations for learning and understanding the curriculum and learning the frameworks. I just think we have to be really cautious with how we approach that with three, four, and five-year-olds. One thing we've learned this spring is that a group with five, three, language-delayed three-year-olds on a speech and language therapy session is about as, goes about as well as you would imagine that to go. It's really, it's really wonderful and precious in so many ways, but certainly a very challenging way to try to, to work with young children. And then I just want to end by giving a huge shout out to the LMPA and Willet staff. We are a group of wonder women and not to leave out Mr. Harty, Mr. Joe, or Mr. Doug, who are supermen as far as I'm concerned, but we have done, I just can't say enough good things about the work that the staff has done in these very challenging times, coming together to create really wonderful and enriching remote learning opportunities for our pre-K through five-year-old. So with that, I will turn it over to the committee if they have any questions and I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Robyn. Questions or feedback from the committee on the Willet and LMPA improvement plan? Is there a motion to approve the one-year improvement plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Thank you, Mara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous, five-zero. Thank you, Mrs. Robyn.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night, Carol.
All right, so moving along, as I said earlier, I'd like to pull up the new business at this time. We do have two guests with us this evening from the May Center Institute. Dr. Thompson, would you like to share a little bit more with the community why we have this presentation before us tonight?
Yes. May is looking to relocate to Norwood. As part of that process, they need to have their curriculum reviewed and approved by the school committee. So we have the director of the May Institute, Andrea Potsney-Grey, and the vice president of educational programs, Pamela Rayn, with us this evening to present to you their program so you can be informed about that. So I don't know who's taking the lead on this, but I will yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? This is my first Google meets, so I'm a little, little concerned. I've been boning up on it all morning to try to make sure I didn't miss, miss anything. So thank you all so much for finding some time for us today to, to share a little bit about our program and to, to seek your approval for, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, for our curriculum, for our program. We found a wonderful location in Norwood and we are looking to relocate our program, so we want to share a little bit about that program with you today. I'm going to attempt to share my screen because I've been practicing, so let's see how it goes. So we just want to share just a brief video. I promise it's brief. It's under three minutes, but it just gives a nice flavor of our program for you. So I'm going to say a little prayer and hope that this works.
I'll let you know when we can see you.
Okay.
Yeah. There you go. All right, it's starting to come up. There we go.
Good.
William, how does it make you feel? All right, go for it.
Welcome to the May Center. Happy to see you.
I mean, they're great to us. I know that my daughter's being taken care of and I know that she's safe and that's the most important thing.
They go above and beyond just, you know, going through the motions of the job people do as she can.
Just, this is a great place because it gives them a sense of belonging.
She feels loved and nurtured and, and she does belong. She wants to, actually she wants to move into residential because she wants to be there all the time.
Our school here is for children and adolescents with brain injuries and neurological issues. What parents often tell me is that they really feel a sense of relief that we understand children and adolescents with brain injuries and the challenges that they experience and they'll say to us, oh, I, you know, finally found a school that understands my child's needs.
I think the most important thing is they clearly recognize each student as an individual and they're willing to custom tailor what they need to to make that individual successful.
One thing that is remarkable about this program is team board.
Working together, we're going to be able to produce results that you wouldn't be able to produce with people working individually.
I think my favorite part is seeing the students' growth. You know, being here for four years, I've had students that have been with us since day one. day one and seeing the progress that they make behaviorally and with their skill sets.
Enjoy your day.
Enjoy your day, buddy.
I just love to watch them grow. I love to watch them be happy.
Our goal is to transition the kids from either here back to public school or from here to adult services.
We have plenty of kids who came here and couldn't talk and now are talking up a storm, couldn't walk and are walking all over the place, or couldn't go out into the community because of their behavior and now they're working in the community.
We come to work every day with the same mentality. We're here for these kids and that's our job. We're here to make sure that they're safe, that they're learning and that they're able to transition from one place to another.
I would definitely emphasize the fact that our staff is very caring, very dedicated, that we would be in touch with them as frequently as they would like us to be. And I would reassure them that their child is in the best hands.
Okay, now.
You're back.
Back, okay. And my screen is gone and I'm back. Okay, perfect. Okay, yay, it worked. Thank you. Uh oh, now it's going to play again. Is it playing again?
We're Zoom people, so bear with us.
Yeah, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. I got to stop the video. Okay, thank you so much. I'd like to turn it over now to Andrea to be able to talk a little bit. She's the executive director of the, of the program and has been with the May for over 27 years. And so she knows a lot about the program and those kids and the great work that they do. So I want her to have a few minutes to talk and we're definitely going to stay on time. Dave definitely encouraged us to stay on time, but we're going to take care of that for you. So go ahead, Andrea.
Yes, well, thank you so much again for having us. I know it's a busy time of year for all of you, so we'll keep it brief. We sent you some information in advance that I think describes our program a little bit as well as gives a little brief summary of the assessments that we typically use as well as our curricula. The video, though, it's a couple of years old. I don't know if you noticed, there's a few Norwood teachers in there. I don't know if you guys caught that, that I worked with in the past that I know are working with you now. Even though it's a couple of years old, it really does, I think, capture who we are, the profile of our students, which is very diverse, as well as our multidisciplinary approach that we have. The, the students that we have, I think sometimes public schools are more familiar with some of our other schools that serve children with AST and we are very different. It's a very unique, diverse group of students. Some students are working on some very functional kinds of goals, whereas we have others that are working on grade level or near grade, grade level material geared towards earning their high school diploma. And there's a lot of students kind of in the middle. So again, it is, the curriculum is really individualized as well as the assessment component. We typically use direct instruction supplemented with web-based assessments that are tied to the standards. So just to talk a little bit about, more about our students, even though it is so diverse, there are some kind of common, some common challenges that they have. Typically, it is a combination of physical, cognitive and behavioral challenges. And the behavioral challenges really do, are quite a range as well. Some students, you know, they, it's pretty infrequent that they have some difficulties, whereas there's others where it's quite, you know, they have even aggressive behaviors. So the, the, I guess the common theme that, another common theme is that they can be very impulsive, have difficulty with problem solving, judgment, and transitions tend to be a real struggle for a number of our students. So our setting has eight classrooms right now and it's a high staff to student ratio. And we do have OTPT speech and nursing and you saw some of the other services that are on the video. So that's kind of the students in a nutshell. And for some outcome measures, just for you to be aware of, we are an ABA program, so we collect a lot of data. And about 98% of our students' IEP goals either were achieved or progressing last year. So that's, we have some pretty, you know, high success rate there. And we really do like to really work on transitioning students back to less restrictive settings a lot. And we actually have a couple of students right now that we're working, well, we were pre-pandemic, I'm working towards getting them back to public school and hopefully we'll, we'll resume with that when the, you know, schools reopen. But about 67% in the last couple of years did either return back to public school or transition to a less restrictive environment. So that's kind of a little snapshot. Do you have any questions at all about anything we sent you or just our school in general?
Thank you so much for being here. Are there questions, feedback from the committee at this time? Maya?
Just a plan on, a question about when you're planning to move and where?
Okay, I can share that. So we are looking at building at One Commerce Way in, in Norwood. It's behind a shopping plaza. I think there might be a grocery store there near Home Depot, kind of right off of Route 1. And it's actually a property that used to be the May Institute's property. And so then several years, I heard the history, several years we sold it and now we want it back. We just really feel, that's kind of how it goes, right? We just really feel like this is a really ideal setting for us. When we decided that we wanted to move from our current location, we started looking, you know, to get kind of a little more centralized and not, not so deep into a town. And so this is really an ideal setting. The property is, we're to close in, in July on the property and then we figure it'll probably be at least 12 months till we're able to move the school. So going to do some, some, some construction and things, so.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Are there other questions at this time? So to clarify, you're before us this evening because you need a vote of approval of the curriculum that you shared. Is that accurate?
That's technically what the, the department of that is requesting, yes.
Okay, okay. So is there a motion from the committee to approve the curriculum of the May Center Institute as was presented to us tonight?
Hang on, I have a, can I ask another question?
Sure, John.
This has less to do with the May Institute and more to do about procedurally. Does this mean that we, because we're approving the curriculum, does this, like, are we going to be looking at school improvement plans or any of those other things?
No, no, no.
It's just an approval of a curriculum?
It's just, yeah.
No.
One and done.
Yeah.
One and done.
Yeah, it's kind of a one and done. This is kind of a, you know, a leftover where school committees would, would, would approve curriculum. So because this is a school in, it's, it's an old lot.
Okay. So this is like basically if there was something that was a curriculum that was super objectionable, that's why the, the, okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always good to clarify.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you know, if we want to add another school improvement plan on every year, like, great, fine, but it just was, you know, I just like to be prepared.
Right. And, you know, and this is an opportunity for, you know, for them to move into, you know, a new space. I, I'm assuming it's somewhat of a larger space and it definitely will be a nicer space for the kids. So.
Yes, absolutely.
It, it was a Jesuit school, Pam? Is that what you told me earlier?
Yeah, it, it was, I think it's been closed for a few years. Do you remember the name of the school, Andrea?
It was the Solomon Schefter.
Okay, yes. There it is.
Yeah. So it's kind of in the same vicinity as what it was before and, you know, it, it's going to be a good spot for, you know, for this population, so.
Thank you, Dave.
So is there a motion from the committee?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Mara, sorry, I was distracted by my Jones adorable daughter, but I think. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, wonderful, five zero. Thank you so much for being with us tonight and good luck with the rest of the processes of purchasing and moving your school.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you did, you did a great, you did a great job, Pam, with the Google meet.
Okay, thanks. I hope I never have to do it again. Add it to my resume. That's a good thing.
Right.
Thank you all so much.
Have a nice night.
Okay, take care.
All right, so moving along on our agenda, next up is superintendent report. So Dr. Thompson?
Yes, so a couple of things. I want to comment a little bit about the, the commissioner of education is basically having weekly Zoom meetings with, with all of the superintendents and it's, it's become must see Zooming, if you will, because we get little tidbits of guidance from that. This past week was very interesting because he was talking about the impending guidance that he's talking about coming out the week of the 15th of June about the guidelines for September. He was pretty adamant on that those will be very explicit. In fact, the, the department will probably be more directive than it probably ever has been in the history of, of the department. He talked about a continuum. I'm kind of pleased to, to, to share that the, the, what I've been talking about, about a continuum between kind of a, a partial open and, and more remote and being able to move back and forth seems to be what he was talking about as well. He, although we will not know that for sure. We have, as administrative team, been having these conversations for the last two or three weeks, you know, in a theoretical piece, we have moved, I think you heard a little bit about it, well, maybe not, at this meeting, before all these meetings are running together. But we have started forming a task force to start dividing up and looking at the different aspects of what the curriculum needs to look like, what scheduling will need to look like, what kind of PPE we're going to need to have, all of those sorts of things, giving that up in preparation for the big reveal. So we are looking forward to that and, you know, I know everybody wants to know as much as we want to know exactly what September is going to be like. And, you know, we are still waiting for that, but, you know, I, I want everyone out there to know that the Norwood schools are preparing for that as we go forth, looking at the CDC guidance, looking at what other countries are doing. And again, those little tidbits that we're getting from, you know, the state level as well. The other thing that he did mention is that the funding is still up in the air. He does not expect that to be coming to us anytime soon. The summer protocols are supposed to be coming out early next week. Here, the governor already released the summer day camp protocols. We are looking at that for extended day. I have told, asked Director Capizio to look at that. My concern is with the increased cleaning and costs and the lower numbers of, of students and stuff that might change our funding for that program, but we are looking at that and hopefully we'll have something about that quickly. The other thing I want to just quickly address, bus passes. We are in the process of trying to get our, an online payment system up and running, an online registration system up and running. So that's been kind of the delay on that, but we do expect that to be out in the next week or two. And if we need to roll the date back based on when we, when we're ready to receive, then, then we will do that. Tomorrow at four, I am doing another Facebook Live. So if people want to tune into that, I will remind people that it is kind of a informal and difficult format because the superintendent is trying to speak to a small screen sprint, squint and read the questions in the box and, and formulate an answer at the whole, at the same time. But I think it's important to, to give people a chance to ask questions. I have gotten about 20 questions through the form. The form was shared earlier this week and is also on the Facebook page if people want to put those in there. There is a question about Lily the Portuguese Water Dog, which I'm very excited to answer. So we'll, we'll get to that a little bit later. The other, the other piece, you know, and I'm going to embarrass Maura Smith, but I want to, you know, because I don't get an addendum at the end, so I have to do it now, Maura. But I want to thank you for your three years of service. You brought a tremendous amount of talent and vision to our, our team and it's been a pleasure getting to know you and a pleasure to, to work with you. I will miss you. I probably will still bother you just because. But, you know, your, your intellect, your, your, you know, your, your thought about how to, how to bring these across people so they're understanding, you know, I, I want to thank you and I want to say that I, that I learned from you and I appreciate all that you did. The other thing that.
Thank you.
The other thing, i- if you will, indulge me. Yesterday afternoon, we, we sent a letter out to the school community about the, you know, the racial injustice that we are all seeing and, and the protests and what have you. I will be completely transparent and give credit where credit is due. Dr. Galligan contacted me on, on Monday afternoon with, with an idea that he wanted, felt, felt that we should put a letter out. And I said, I, I agree with him. I also told him I didn't have the time right then and there to try to compose a letter, which he offered to do. So, you know, so the letter is authored by he and I'm sure, you know, knowing how he and Mrs. Doreen worked together, I'm sure she had some, some pieces of that as well. What happened after that is the letter came to the, you know, to the administrative team and we were discussing how to distribute it and we decided that it would come from the school principals, but it really is from the entire team and just listed names from the bottom. So I, if you would, I'd like to read that because that only went out as an email to those that are either teachers or students or, or parents in the community. So, "Dear Norwood Public Schools Students, Family and Staff, we write to you with heavy hearts. Our hearts and minds are filled with confusion, anger and sadness. We've watched it as you have with horror and despair, the recent murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. As leaders of your schools, we denounce these horrific actions. We recognize that at this time, our students, families and staff members of color may be filled with fear, confusion and anger and may be experiencing trauma as a result of these actions. We with our entire staff across our schools and districts stand with our students, families and members of, and staff members of color. We see you, we hear you, we value you, we care for you, we love you. In the Norwood Public Schools, our diversity is our strength. Our differences are what bring us together. As educators, we continuously learn and engage in conversations around diversity, equity, inclusion. Together, we pledge to support our students through these conversations, to challenge injustices and institutional racism, to examine implicit bias and to remain committed to equity. For our parents, we have included the following resources from our partner, the Anti-Defamation League. As you know, we work with ADL to provide professional development for our staff on issues around diversity, equity, inclusion. And this year at the high school launched our inaugural year of the ADL's World of Difference Student Leadership Program. Parents may find the tabletop exercises on the killing of George Ford and Floyd and systematic racism helpful tools for discussion, discussing these issues with adolescents. This is an ongoing series and you may find the archives useful too. And there's a link to the ADL in that email. If anyone else would, would like it, it is also on the school webpage. Our hearts are heavy with these, our hearts are heavy within these heavy hearts. We are trying to find room for hope and love that we so often pride ourselves on. There's, it is that hope and love among all members of our school community that will allow us to bring a positive change. We ask that all members of our school community stand together and do the same. We love your school leadership team." So I just wanted to share that and make sure that that was shared with the entire community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I've heard from a number of people that they really appreciated that letter going out. So if, if you and your team have not heard it directly, just so you know, a lot of people were very touched and very proud that our leadership team addressed it in that letter.
Well, we have, we have an incredible, you know, and it's a team where if anybody has an idea, you know, they, they bring it forth and, you know, we, we support any, any good idea. So that's, that's what we do. And, you know, the, you know, the words, you know, I, I guess Dr. Galligan's B C, B C education paid off because that was an incredible letter. So I want to thank him.
Yeah.
He captured it really well. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Dr. White, did you want to share anything? I, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I wasn't sure if you were leaving or not.
I, I wanted to, you know, be really present for that letter because I, I think it's very powerful. I too thank Dr. Galligan and Cindy for their work on that letter. And it's, you know, we're, we're in a difficult time in our nation right now and we all need to be leaders in this area. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Dr. White. Dr. Thompson, did you have any further superintendent report this evening? Oh, you're muted.
Well, I, I, yeah, I figured once, once, once Dr. White went, I wouldn't get a word in Ed White, so I muted, but. Well, I I, yeah, I figured once 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 Dr. White went, I wouldn't get a word in edgewise, so I muted, but that but thank you. No, that's all for tonight.
Alright, thank you so much. So moving along on the agenda, going into budget, as everybody will recall, last meeting, we did start discussing again, the bus fees and possible reimbursement of the bus pass from this current school year. And there was a motion last meeting to table this discussion until tonight to allow the public to reach out with any feedback they had on the topic. Again, I'm just checking the school committee email, MPS school committee. I have not received anything in that email address. I also have not received anything personally as a school committee member. Has any other school committee member received any feedback from the community on the issue of bus pass possible reimbursement? Now I've seen a lot of no, okay, Dr. Thompson, did you receive any more feedback?
No, I have not.
Okay, so for you and Ms. Sheridan, I know you followed up with Mr. Bishop again on this topic. Any new information from last week?
I believe Ms. Sheridan has some, I don't know which number.
I'm here.
There you are, okay.
Hopefully, I won't go up. I did do some investigation on what some of the other districts were doing and there's all different ones. There's some that are given refunds, there's some that are given credits. There's some that are offering credit and only giving refund if it's requested. And there's also some that are reducing the fees for next year and then others that are not doing anything. So it's really all over the place on the bus fees.
Okay, at this time, Ms. Sheridan, Dr. Thompson and also with Mr. Bishop, you know, what is your recommendation to the school committee on this issue?
Yeah, our 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 recommendation is to not refund the money and that's basically for for several reasons. One, if someone moves or if they play sports, we don't refund money. We have continued to pay the bus company and we are looking at increased costs going into next year with having to clean buses, so I'm concerned about taking money out out of the, what little money is is extra in there. We're only really talking of maybe $42. People did not get a discount and paid the full amount. If you did, it probably is around $20 or $30. But you know, we're looking at at increasing costs going into next year. The other thing that I that I will say is that, you know, schools are 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 collect money. We don't really pay out money. We're not set up that in order to do that, we would have to make every single parent a vendor. And as you saw from the numbers last week, that's over 1,000 hand entries into our payment system. So I don't know how exactly that would actually occur at this point in time, you know, between now and and October, to be honest with you, so, you know, returning money would be. We would need to hire people to try to return money to to do it in any way, to do it this fiscal year, so. So that's, I don't know if Mrs. Sheridan wants to add to that.
Well, I agree. I think the fact that we're still paying the vendor and also next year, it seems like I watched a webinar on Masbo about the implications of the COVID-19 with next year's transportation and, I mean, with the cleaning, less kids on the bus. I mean, the expenditures for busing seem to be going to be much more next year, so. That would be, my recommendation would be the same as Dr. Thompson and Al.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the committee at this time? Maya?
I'd like to make a motion to not refund bus fees.
Okay, is there a second on that motion, Dave?
I tabled it last time, I did not receive any responses and I have come to better understanding that we have provided a good value and even if we could reimburse this effectively, it would be too expensive, so I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Mara?
Yeah, thank you. I I completely understand the concern. I just, for me, I I have a hard time voting in favor of not doing the refund simply because, you know, as I said last time, I think Maya have made actually a very good point of we don't refund when a student decides to no longer take the bus because they're doing a sport or, you know, they get a car or something like that. To me, that feels very different than this situation where we're simply no longer providing the service. And I understand that $42, you know, might not seem like a lot, but to some families that might actually be money that they need right now. And I think even outside of that, I I just don't feel right in us still holding on to to money that folks paid for a service that we're we're not providing at this point. So that's just, to me, it's just kind of a simple equation of they paid for a service that we are no longer providing and I I do understand issues that that go into doing that, but I just I just don't, to me, I I can't support not refunding that.
Thank you, Mara. Other comments at this time from the committee? Joan?
Is there an option to to refund only upon request? I don't know who I'm asking that to and I think I just broke Robert Rules of Order by suggesting something when there's already motion on the table, but yeah.
It's part of the discussion.
Okay, I'd like to discuss whether or not we are able to offer a refund upon request.
Yes, but it also depends on how many. So 1,000 requests, 100 requests, you know, I mean, and I'll be completely honest. My my first priority is to set up the payment system and and get our bus registration up and running before we start trying to reimburse. So that's that that has to be job one and this again is is kind of the ongoing. You know, there there isn't a lot of people to do extra work. We barely have enough people to do the the regular work and we're we're challenged, but that's, you know, it is what it is, but yes. Depending. We could all look at a credit would be easier.
That's it, I was just going to say that a credit upon request would be an easier option.
Dr. Thompson, will you remind us, please, how many families have already, you know, proactively reached out to you or to Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Bishop requesting either a credit or a refund?
We have only, we have only heard from two.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's two.
Two. Further discussion? Do we want to vote on the motion? Are we wanting further things looked into? Because Maya's motion is seconded by Dave is to not process the refund. So let's vote on that motion, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? One, alright, so the motion passes four to one to not refund the bus fees for this current school year. Next on the agenda, budget transfers, but Ms. Sheridan, I believe we don't have any budget transfers this evening, correct?
That's correct, I don't have any this evening.
Okay, okay. So now moving along to old business, so unfortunately, yet again, we do have to have a, what I think is going to be a quick discussion around the 2020, 2021 school calendar, so Dr. Thompson?
Yeah, this this comes strongly under the category of you can't make this stuff up. So as soon as we voted to follow the state guideline that the the 14th of September was going to be Marathon Day and and a state holiday, they quickly canceled the marathon and canceled the state holiday. So I would respectfully ask the committee with good humor to remove that that 14th of September from the calendar, go back to ending on whatever that Friday was. Alec, do you happen to know that right at the top of your lungs or no? With that, because we we're going to have to go to that Monday, so now we're back to that Friday for the 180 and 185. Do you, do you have that there or no? If not, I can pull it up. Is it on the? Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's linked in the last one, but anyhow, so.
It's it's the 14th, September 14th, yep.
Right, so the 180th day would would go back to being the 14th of of June.
No, it's September 14th, we would be putting back on the calendar. And is it June 18th, Friday, June 18th, that we would then be going to school until?
Oh, I see, let me check here. That's correct, yep, that's correct, yep, Friday, June 18th, yep.
It's 180.
Yep.
Okay, so there's a motion from the committee to make the, yeah, Mara? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Maya, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, great.
Okay, we will put the old calendar back up.
Dave told me this had to go back on our agenda. I was like, can we just have like a disclaimer at the bottom of the school year that, who knows?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. So moving along to policy, we did have a policy subcommittee meeting. When was that, last Thursday, I think, Ray, Joan and Dave and Karen? It was 29th, whatever day the 29th was, Friday, Friday we met. And you do have in your packet a number of things from us. We do want to discuss tonight the budget transfer policy that we made some updates to. We're also going to take a look at the MASD Policy Audit Service that we've been talking about. We have a sample contract from them. And then we did also want to touch upon on the individual evaluations of the school committee members for Dr. Thompson's evaluation. So all of that material is in your Google folder. So if you look in the policy section, you have both the current budget transfer policy, which is file DBJ. And you know, as we have talked about before on the committee in our budget subcommittee meetings and our policy subcommittee meetings, the current budget transfer policy is pretty vague and has led to a lot of work in budget transfers coming our way that sometimes are for very small amounts of money and really are being done in a way that we have felt like as a committee, do we really need to approve every single one of these? So Ms. Sheridan did some research, she looked at some other districts, she did put together the draft that you should have in front of you. It says on the top in red that it is the draft format. We did approve this as a policy subcommittee on the 29th, but we of course need to bring it forth to the school committee. Was everybody able to take a look at that draft? Questions, you know, from a Sheridan or feedback on that draft policy? Maya?
Just a question about the the transfers between line items within a major account that exceed a threshold of $25,000. So I guess I'm not sure exactly what we mean by a line item. I mean, I I understand the meaning of the word, but I don't understand, like, in in this case, I guess, is it possible that we might shift $15,000 from one school to another without a vote? Or like if it's within a major account, does that mean that it's staying in the same school? I just kind of want to understand what exactly that, how this is limiting us.
Yeah, great question, and we did discuss it, but Ms. Sheridan, do you want to answer?
Well, the way that I thought it would be was, obviously, we've got the function codes, which would be, you know, for example, the instructional services, the 2000 account. So that's where we would ask for approval, but between the 2000s, for example, if there was going to be a jump of that 25, of 25,000 or more for maybe, I don't know, therapy services that is going to be moved to contractual services, then we felt that that should be brought to the school committee. And but anything under 25,000, we felt that it would just be reported, but the 25,000, we felt should be brought to the school committee. The under the 25,000, we thought would be just a list that would be added to the quarterly report of the budget transfers that would go in the smaller amounts between those accounts. So that between the accounts would be within the 2000s area, all those accounts within that area. Or for example, within the 3000s area would be like transportation or or student activity. Anything of 25,000 or more within those accounts would be brought to the school committee for approval.
So who would approve budget transfers, like, within the 2000s between schools? Like, you know, if we decided that if somebody wanted, you know, if the LMPA wants to spend more money and they want to take some money from the balch, how does that happen?
Do you mean above the 25,000?
No, under the 25,000.
That under the 25,000, the when we wrote this policy, it would be that if it's within the function code list, which would be the areas, for example, instructional, that it would just be reported to the school committee, but would not.
No, I understand the school committee wouldn't wouldn't approve it, but I'm assuming that it doesn't mean that Carolyn Robbins and Diane Ferrera duke it out, right? Somebody, who makes that decision and how does that happen?
The way I would think it would be the superintendent.
Okay, that was my question. Mara, did you have a question?
Yeah, I I was reading over this policy earlier today and it's funny because I I'm I'm sort of of two minds in that, one, I think it sort of streamlines the the functioning of the schools, that not every small line. I mean, sometimes we get transfers, you know, very small amounts and I think to kind of streamline that, it it does make a lot of sense. I'll say I have a sort of overall, I guess, theoretical qualm about it and then I have a more specific wording within the policy qualm. I know that within Ed Reform, right, we have the the ability to move money around within the budget and and that's something that that obviously should should be happening to make the school function. I do know that, I'm trying to word this carefully, that sometimes causes some concern with members of town meeting, for example, who tend to think that we're moving money around in ways that perhaps might not be as prudent and that we don't have to come to town meeting to say all of those moves, which again, makes perfect sense because then it would be utterly impossible to run the school district. I just worry that if we're doing something like this, where we're saying that transfers are happening, even if it's below a certain amount, but the school committee is only being informed, we're not voting on them, I worry that that may seem, that that may feed into some of those fears in a way. And it may just undercut some of our advancements that we've been making in terms of being, you know, really, really transparent. So I guess part of my concern is, I'm just pulling the the policy up here at this point. Transfers between line items within a major account that exceed a threshold of 25,000 must be reported to the school committee as part of the director of finance, but we wouldn't necessarily be, like, I guess my question is, it's going to be reported but not voted on. And that, to me, feels like it's taking away some of the oversight that the committee would have. And then that last, the the second to last paragraph, the committee wishes to be kept abreast of the need for these adjustments so that it may act promptly and expedite financial record keeping for the school system. It, to me, it, I I just worry that this is kind of making the committee a little toothless, like, we wish to be approved, like, kept in mind, but we don't necessarily have to be made aware. Do you know what I mean? I I just, I worry that, I worry that that may be an obviously unintended consequence of this, but it's just, I worry about that.
Okay. Yeah, Karen?
Is it something that maybe if we had a smaller threshold, that that budget transfers did not have to be approved by the school committee? Because what's what's happening now is a restriction, it's, even if it's 100 over, I have to get a budget approval and it's in munis, it won't even allow me to put stuff in if it $10 over, so we're trying to find a way to be able to, you know, move forward better with the payables, because right now, it's too constricting.
Right, yeah, Dr. Thompson and then David.
So this current financial software is much more restrictive than what we had before. So we have to wait up to two weeks in order to bring anything to to the school committee. Then we have to get it over to town, to the town hall and they have to make the change. So it's turning into, you know, three plus weeks before we can, you know, spend an extra hundred dollars. I've never worked in a system, Ian and I have worked in systems that have been designed by the same company where the business manager has not had the ability to, you know, overspend in a line and then, and then do some approvals or, or moving around within a certain amount. So that's another conversation, but, but right now, I mean, we're, we're literally scrambling because, you know, we need to buy PPE and other things along that line for the fall. And we got to add the money in the accounts to do so. And if we don't have the money in the accounts, we can't do it. And if we can't order it now, we won't have it. So this is a good example of why, you know, I mean, having, having the rope, you know, and I agree that there needs to be oversight, you know, as a, as a board member at the state and national level, that, that's what we did. But it is, it is overs- oversight, you know, the difference between oversight and, and, and management are, you know, need to be, needs to be kind of a dotted line in there somehow, but. But yeah, so, I mean, it, you know, maybe it's not 25, maybe it's 15, maybe it's 20. But, you know, the principal should be able to, you know, spend a little bit more or move money from, you know, instructional supplies to equipment without having to wait a month.
Yeah, thank you. Fast and deep, Tanya.
Even when you, even when you order, you know, in a, in a purchase syst- in a, in a town system, you send them a paper, you know, a piece of paper, they send you, it's, it's a good two weeks, even when you have the money to, to order it. So it's not like you pick up the phone, you give them a credit card, and something shows up like Amazon in two days. So it, it is one of those things where, you know, the, you know, the big moves should be the big moves and they should be approved, but, you know, small moves are, are, you know, what you, what you paid Karen and I to do. So.
Yeah, Dave, Tanya.
So I, I absolutely hear and understand Mara's concerns. I had the same concerns specifically because it seems like, ooh, 25,000, and that could happen multiple times in the course of a quarter. But I also appreciate Dave's explanation of why and how, when we have to be faster doing things. Because, you know, we get these budget transfer requests for relatively small amounts of money. You know, it's important that we ask why and how. So I think a compromise for this, I'm, I'm fine with the, you know, if the budget subcommittee has agreed on the 25,000 dollar number, that, that's seems to be in line with what's expected, but also I would prefer, when these things happen, possibly weekly, like email something saying these budget transfers happened. So we're able to ask rather than waiting for the end of a quarter, were there lots of budget transfers? You know, that would just make me feel more comfortable, but I continue my role and what we're elected to do in oversight, rather than being caught flat footed at the end of a quarter with possibly lots of things to be explained. So that would be my request for the change of policy if the committee so wishes it.
Yeah, Mara.
Well, off of that, I mean, I guess part of my concern too is we have to vote to approve a budget transfer. What if we're informed of one retroactively that a committee member has a concern about?
I, I hear your question. So, and Karen, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. I mean, we would still be getting budget transfers if it's going across function code. That's still definitely happening. This provision was really trying to figure out, you know, as, as Dave and Karen have already spoke to, a more efficient way for them to carry out management duties and, and not have to delay. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple of things. One, the amount of the 25,000, do we want that to be different? And two, the reporting, so if, if there are items within a function code and a line item that we don't approve, but we get notified, when do we want to be notified? Is quarterly not comfortable? And do people want that notification more regularly? So that's what I'm hearing as the two issues we still want to work through. But Joan and then Maya.
Um, Maya, I've actually had her hand up first, though.
Oh, okay.
To this, Joan, you go ahead.
Okay, so what I'm hearing too is that it's not very clear that we're only talking about within building. And for me, that makes a big, to me, that makes a big difference. That was understood by the policy subcommittee, that this was only going to be taking place within building. Is, or is that not an issue?
I don't believe that's how it's written.
It's not. I don't think it's how it's written.
Right, so that is an issue also that's coming up, is that we conceived it as within building, and that's not what came across in the written word.
Right.
That's not what's being first read.
A question for clarification on that. When we're saying transfer between line items within a major account, in munis aren't each building their own account? So isn't that implied there?
This says the major accounts are the things that end in zero zero. So it would be like a transfer from instructional services to school services. But within instructional services, there are accounts for each school.
No, I understand that. I understand that transfers between the major accounts, but then the third paragraph where it says transfers between line items within a major account, like, isn't like the balch line item different than the Willet? So the concern of, of what you raised, Maya, isn't that already protected?
That's what I was trying to ask, and I didn't, I guess maybe I'm not sure I understand either.
Yeah.
Karen, did you get that?
Within the line items, we could re- we could report on any, every school committee meetings, the budget transfers that if you want, every school committee we can, or maybe lower the threshold to at least that maybe like a $5,000 or something so that, like, for example, I had some sped legal fees and I couldn't even put those through because I needed a couple hundred dollars. So it's even expenses that we have no control over that, like, special education legal fees and things like that, that I have no control over, and I still can't get them through without a budget transfer.
Joan, do you have a question specifically to what Karen just said?
Um, no, I have a motion.
Okay, well, because I, I think Maya, was there something else you wanted to say, Maya?
I just wanted to say that, so number one, the way this policy reads, like, even on $25,000 change, we don't have to vote. We just have to be informed within the quarter, right?
That's how it reads, within, if it's a $25,000, $25,000 change within a major account, we would be notified within the quarter. Yes, that's how it's currently written.
Okay, so, so I, I, you know, have concerns about that. And then the other thing is, it, this seems to only be about school committee approval, but the policy says Norwood Public Schools Budget Transfer Authority policy. So I think if we are saying we don't need to vote, we still have to author, like, deputize somebody else to make the authorization. And probably the superintendent or maybe the school business manager, but somebody needs to sign off on that. It can't just be like anybody who puts in a request.
The, can, these issues came up in our, these, we talked about all of this, and I think one of the reasons we're being caught, I wouldn't say we're being caught off guard, but it's clear that the conversation that we had as a, as a policy subcommittee did not get translated into, well enough into the written, if there's this much confusion. So I'd actually like to propose that we table this. The policy subcommittee takes the feedback back and writes a more clear version of with, with better intent and more spelt out, because we did discuss all of these things.
Yeah.
And we talked about all of these things, and we addressed all of these things, and then we didn't write them down. So rather than, like, let's, let's get a better draft version of what we intended out before you guys and then fully debate, you know, additional points.
Yeah, I, I hear, whatever I'm saying, I, one of my ongoing frustrations and why I'm glad we're going to be talking next about the MASC policy audit is because our policy manual is so out of date. Because some of the questions that everybody is raising right now, they're already issues in the current DBJ policy as it currently stands. There, it's already legitimate issues. And some of these things we're discussing tonight are covered under another policy on bidding. So in the policy subcommittee, we're like cross referencing and looking at all those policies and having these discussions. And we, we just met on Friday, so we haven't approved the minutes from the last meeting. So that's also part of what's been lost in that translation, I think, I think, too. But just so that we are clear, because we do have to schedule another policy subcommittee meeting anyway. The committee would like us to look at the threshold. Is there a recommendation from the other three members for Joan and Karen and Dave and I to work on? If you're not comfortable with 25,000, what are you comfortable with? Yeah, Dave, Tanya.
No, I think I am comfortable with 25,000 because, you know, these are things that are expected and normal. Just I wish there was a, a more frequent update rather than quarterly, you know, because it seems like that could happen. It just seems like maybe if there was a way to keep that number and have a more frequent update, I'd be fine with it. Or maybe it's like a $10,000 number, but really, the number is arbitrary because, you know, it doesn't, there's no cap on it. Maybe a blend of something like, you know, should the transfers hit every 25,000, we get a report, something like that. It's just, I don't have a firm grasp of totaling out all the transfers we've done. There seems to be a lot. And I don't recall anything being, even approaching that amount that came before us. But again, it's been a long time and many transfers. So, you know, I think I would be just more comfortable with getting a more frequent update than quarterly.
Okay, Maya, Mara, yeah, Maya.
Um, I, I'm okay with a $25,000 threshold if we vote over, if it's over $25,000. I mean, I think if the, if we approved a, a budget that said we wanted, you know, three first grade teachers at the Cleveland, and then, you know, we decide instead to have an extra, you know, two extra teachers at the high school and one first grade teacher at the Cleveland, like, I think that needs to come back to the school committee for a vote, and I don't think that this policy says that.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to say, I, I, I'm here what you're saying about the 25,000. So that certainly would be something that we could do, change that to be, that had to be approved. The other thing, I think, when we had the discussion, my thoughts have always been, as a business manager, is whenever, whenever anything goes over budget in a line, I always bring it to the superintendent. So it's, I feel like my job is the, the bottom line of the budget. But within the lines, I don't feel as I have the authority to go over unless I speak to the superintendent. So that's probably what we were, when we had the discussion in the policy subcommittee meeting, we were talking about that, which is just the way that I've always worked, is if it goes over in a line, I bring it to the superintendent and say, this is going over, are you okay with it? And if he says no, he runs the school and he makes that decision, and then it's denied. But if it's fine, then it goes over. So maybe I'm making a little clearer in this policy. But that's, when we had the discussions, those were kind of the discussions we had.
That makes sense, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, um, Joan, just real quickly, and then I'll, I'll let you share. We did talk about that, and I know I also asked, and I would love to hear the full committee's feedback on this because there's policy and there's procedure. So like, we're supposed to set the policy, but then when it comes to the management of Dr. Thompson and his team, that's more procedure. So we did have a conversation of what is the current procedure already? If this policy changes, how does that impact the procedure of Dr. Thompson down? You know, what the principals are interacting with Karen, but I don't believe that is supposed to be in our policy.
But thank you for setting me up for that, because I was actually going to say that. It's almost like, so that was a nice segue. We do, Maya's right, though, we do have to authorize who makes that decision around spending. And so that's simple to put into the policy, to the, the school committees designee or to the superintendent. Like, we can make that, 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 again, this reflects the discussion that we had that we were all talking about for these safeguards in the policy subcommittee that never made it into that policy. We never put, we all understood in the room that Dave was going to approve anything under $25,000, or 25,000, but we didn't, it didn't make it into the policy. So we need to go back and make sure what we talked about is in the policy.
Yeah, Maya.
So I agree with you that we don't set procedure, but I think the line is that we might say the policy is that the superintendent has to approve these changes. And then the procedure would be either Karen sends him an email, or there's something through munis, or there's some form that's filled out and triplicate. That's not our call, how they actually, like, the mechanism for making sure that the approval has happened. But I think it's totally a policy thing to say somebody's got to approve it.
I feel very strongly that it needs to be triplicate carbon copy. I am kidding. I do not feel that way. I agree with Maya's point.
Okay. Mara, was there something else that you wanted to share?
No, I mean, I was just kind of echoing what was going to echo what Maya said, is I just, I think it's very, very important that it's incredibly clear who is signing off on these and what that, what that overall procedure is going to be. I, I'm, I'm kind of slightly less comfortable with the 25,000. I'd like it to be a little bit lower, but, you know, that's my, my, my parting words to all of you. You can, you, you all get to decide, but I think 20, I, I'd go, I'd go lower. But that's just.
Okay. And I'm not disputing anything anybody has said, but just, just to throw that out there. The other policies we looked at in other districts, they didn't spell out what we're saying we now want to spell out, which was another reason why I was perceiving it as more procedure and not policy. So just food for thought. And, you know, as we hopefully, that conversation start to work with MASC more, I am going to be very interested and intrigued with all the things they tell us about our policy manual. But Karen did pull, I think, four or five of their district policies that we reviewed, and, and none of them stated what we're now saying we want in, in here. So just to be fair, but we can definitely work on it, Karen.
Yeah. This, the policy that we have here was in so many districts that it almost made me feel like it was something from MASC. So, I mean, there was so many that had the same policy. So, but I, I mean, I don't have any problem with, with adjusting it to what you guys feel comfortable with.
Yeah, so we can meet again as a policy subcommittee. I'll, I'll send out a due to poll to everybody tonight or tomorrow, and we'll reconvene. And if there's any other further feedback that anybody has, or, you know, Mara, you as well before June 8th. If you have further feedback, send it to Dr. Thompson, and we'll definitely incorporate that. Um, all right, so thank you for that great discussion. Next policy item is the MASC policy audit that, you know, we have been talking about for quite a while and really wanting to enter into that agreement. So you have an email, just kind of those like some background context of a thread that was going on for a while. But you also have in your Google Drive, the draft contract from the MASC. I'm sorry, I just clicked on the wrong document. So you'll see that it's highlighted, it doesn't yet say Norwood, but this is the, the draft terminology that if, you know, we as a committee tonight agree that you want us to move forward, then I, as chair, would say to them, please, you know, give us that final draft, that final contract that says Norwood. But basically, what we are hoping to do, and what we did put in our budget, we do have money in FY21's budget currently for this policy service, is to bring MASC on board to help us really audit that tremendously large outdated policy manual that we have, that we've been trying to work on, but it's just a lot of work. It, it's not possible for, for Joan and I as a policy subcommittee to do what needs to be done. So they would get a copy of our current policies, all of our handbooks, some contracts you can see in this contract, all the different documents they would want. And they do request that we give them 120 days to go through all of our stuff, mark it up, figure out where we need some help. And then they would schedule meetings with our policy subcommittee. We would work in tandem with them, really going through every single policy, updating where needed, taking things out if it's outdated. There might be new policies we're supposed to have that we don't have. It's usually completed, the entire project, within 18 to 24 months. And it is required that you be done within 30 months. If you go beyond the 30-month mark, then there's additional fees from what we'll be talking about tonight. The overall project is $10,500, but that is broken down into three installments, $3,500, with the first installment being due when we sign the contract. And that is what we have budgeted for in the FY21 budget. Once it's completed, after 18 to 24 months, we got the manual back. We'll all get new copies of the manual. They put it on, you know, flash drives for everybody. And then if we wanted them to host our manual, because if you go to the MASC website, you'll see there's about 20 school districts who they host their manual for them, that's a separate contract. That's a separate thing that they call Policy 21. But what this contract for $10,500 does is bring them in, they review all of our stuff, and then they help us get it updated. So that's just quick overview of what the contract states and what, as the policy subcommittee, we're hoping we can enter into in July. But questions, feedback from the committee? Yeah, Maya.
I think this is a good idea, and so I'd like to make a motion to enter into this contract.
Thank you. Thank you, is there a second on that motion?
I second.
Thank you, Joan. And you thirded and forthed and fifthed.
I enthusiastically seconded it.
Make sure I put that in the notes, Donna. Um, but further discussion at this time? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous, wonderful, all right. So I will continue to connect with them, get a finalized contract to us, and very much look forward to their assistance with this, very important. So thank you. Uh, so last policy item, um, which isn't an official policy, but it felt like something I talked to Thompson about it a while ago, and we felt like we should start to hash it out in the Policy Subcommittee and then bring it forth to the, to the full committee. Um, you know, as we all know, um, the timing of elections and committee members coming on and, and going off have been impacted by COVID-19. So we are in a very unique situation right now where, um, you know, tonight is Maya's last official school committee meeting. The new member will be with us on June 17th. And then we've already determined as a school committee that on June 30th, uh, Dr. Thompson will be giving us his self-assessment, and we will all be compiling, um, our individual evaluation. So it's just a quick turnaround in a very different timeline than we typically have done. So, uh, as a Policy Subcommittee, we wanted to bring it forth for discussion on how we want to handle this in terms of, um, I, I, I think it would not be feasible or practical, and I did speak with Ann Marie Missola, who, uh, will be joining us, um, to get her feedback. Um, I, I just don't think it's feasible to say welcome on June 17th, write an evaluation on a superintendent that you're working with for like two weeks before that process. Um, so do we as a committee, and Mara obviously has the significant say in this, um, want Mara to contribute to the individual, uh, you know, her individual, uh, evaluation? Um, or do we want to say that it will just be the four of us, Dave, Joan, Maya, and I, who are writing the individual evaluations? Yeah, Maya.
I'll start. Um, I, you know, when I, when I sort of, this, this topic was brought up, I, I, I've been thinking about it a lot, and I think I will just share some concerns I have regarding it. Um, and this is not necessarily, I'm trying very hard, uh, to sort of separate myself as the individual who would be doing it versus the larger, you know, issue of, of what this may mean. And I guess my concern is just, I'm, you know, I'm leaving the committee because I decided not to run again. Um, I wasn't defeated, I, you know, nothing like that. Um, and I, I just worry that if someone was leaving, and perhaps that hadn't been the case, and that they, you know, might be feeling a certain way, we're kind of opening up the door for them to, you know, um, you know, perhaps, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna, I, I'm not saying that anyone would do this intentionally, but, you know, people's feelings get hurt when they're voted out, and, you know, perhaps things could, could, could work their way into the, the evaluation that otherwise, you know, may not. Um, and I also, uh, am aware that one of the main, you know, um, purviews of the, the school committee is, um, to evaluate the superintendent. And as of June 8th, I am no longer the, um, or whoever would be in this situation is no longer the person who has been elected by the town members to serve on this board. And I, I feel, I feel a little bit like, um, that's overstepping in, in, in a way. Um, just my own, my own person, and again, it's, it's not necessarily about me, but it's, it's more to me, concerns are about the precedent that it sets. Um, just one other thought, um, off of what you just said, Teresa, of that the options are either I do it, or the four of you do it without Ann Marie. I, I just, I don't know that it should be for the committee to make that decision for her before she's even been elected and even been a member of the board. Um, you know, if, if she comes on, I mean, I remember I, Teresa and I, we, we, you know, we both came on and we had to evaluate, um, Jim Hayden when we had only been here for a little bit. And, um, you know, we, we did that to the best of our ability. But if she wants to, um, recuse herself, I think that should kind of be left to her when she's, she's on the committee. But those are, those are just my, my opinions.
Yeah. Respect everything you just said. Um, I think what I will do before other people, um, contribute, um, is just read what the MASC says. Um, try to be a rule follower, just in the way I perceive things in my thinking process. But the MASC also doesn't regulate what we do, but this is their guidance. Which in the packet, you know, I did link to, um, their very new, um, evaluation packet that they just created at the end of December, because as we all know, the rubric and the evaluation process have changed. Um, on page 12, uh, which is in the notes that I sent you, um, they say that one committee chooses a cycle that does not coincide with elections. It is useful to consider what happens if the composition of the committee changes during the cycle. While members stepping off the committee can prepare an individual evaluation that cover the period up until the point they leave the committee, and this can become part of the composite, so that is an option. Um, members that join the committee partly through may contribute to the evaluation based on the time they have been on the committee. So yes, you're absolutely right, Mara. Ann Marie would absolutely have that chance if she wanted to. Um, and then the MASC goes on to say, they may choose not to participate depending on how up to speed they feel, or they may decide to participate in part or fully participate. Of course, as members of the committee at the time of the actual evaluation, they are fully able to vote on the final evaluation if they choose. So that, that's what's coming to us from MASC. So other thoughts, or how do we want to proceed with this? Yeah, Joan?
So the bigger issue is we need to move the evaluation cycle, right? Like, can we just not lose sight of that at some point after we solve the, the micro problem? Can we fix the systemic problem and shift the evaluation cycle so it doesn't line up with our elections?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's very valid, I think that, um, it's just even more tricky this year, because, you know, we've all been through it, you know, Joan, you came on last April and evaluated Dr. Thompson the year before, Dave did that, you know, two years before that, you know, Mara and I had two months with Mr. Hayden before we had to do his exit evaluation. So I think by default, Lord has always kind of done this. If you're sitting on the committee, at the time the evaluation comes up, you evaluate based on your experience. It's just now a very bizarre timing turnaround. And I didn't want to unilaterally make any decisions on this without discussing with the full committee. So, the, the biggest question, I guess, is around, um, Mara, if, if you will be contributing your individual evaluation, because there's nothing in here that says it's either or, that it's you or Ann Marie, it could be both. So I guess that's the biggest thing that I would want to talk about, since this is your last meeting. No pressure, Maya. Oh, you muted, Maya.
I'm sorry, it took me a minute, my button didn't seem to want to unmute. Um, I absolutely value Mara's feedback, and I think it would be appropriate for, if Mara chose, to provide us with some narrative about some of the goals and, and, you know, her specific interactions with Dr. Thompson, especially if there are things that the rest of us might not have been privy to. But, um, I, I think, you know, in the years past, what we have done is for each, um, goal or criteria, or, you know, standard, we have each made a recommendation for proficient, not proficient, like, the different categories, met the criteria, not met the criteria. And I, I don't think that it would, to Mara's point, that, like, she would no longer be an, you know, an elected member of this board that's charged with doing this. I don't know that she, like, that if she made an evaluation like that in terms of proficient or not proficient, that that should be counted in as we kind of, you know, tally them up at the end of the, in the composite and try and come up with where are we at? I just, I, that makes me really uncomfortable to, to, i- i- in some ways, that would sort of be de facto giving somebody a vote after they got off the committee. And as Mara said, this is not about Mara, this is about, you know, our practice going forward. It's certainly much more dramatic this time, because there's like three weeks instead of two or three months. But it's, oh, as you mentioned, it's always been a problem, and, you know, I, I think it could be a situation where, as Mara said, it's somebody who's been elected off the committee. And if it's the will of the community not to have that person serving on the committee anymore, then I certainly don't think we want to set ourselves up so that we have created some system where we need to take that vote into account.
I, I hear, I hear you. I guess I'm seeing as two separate things, feedback and vote, because, uh, under, none of us, the May suggesting or is MASC saying that the person once unelected should have a vote on the compilation, but the ability to provide the feedback.
But I, certainly they wouldn't take a vote on the final composite document. But what we have done in the past is, you know, if there's three exemplaries and two proficiences, then we say that we, the composite says exemplary in that area. So what happens if Mara's rating sways the, where that goes? You know what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
And I just, I'm very uncomfortable with that precedent.
So as Joan pointed out, and I think we all agree, the larger issue is realigning the evaluation cycle with, you know, when we do, in September, do the next round, whether it's a one-year or two-year, um, cycle that we decide to move forward with, at that point, we, we should definitely, you know, think about this and then, um, hope there's no more pandemics that mess it all up. Um, but yeah, I, so, so moving forward, does somebody want to make a motion for this, this, this cycle?
I, I have a question, do we need, what's the, what would we be making a motion on?
Well, I guess if we don't make a motion, we just default to practice we've already been doing.
Right, practice, current practices, um, Mara doesn't write, and, or whoever, who, current practice is the current school committee does the evaluation, right? The sitting school committee does the evaluation.
Okay, so, I mean, if we feel comfortable with that, and feel like there's no need to, to motion on anything, we, we can move on.
I, actually, I'll make a motion that we, um, move the evaluation, not this year, but next year.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know how else to get this, I don't know how else to get that done, so it doesn't fall off our radar and happen again.
Yeah, my only hesitation is that, you know, it's written into, um, Dr. Thompson's contract that there is the possibility of we being, uh, doing a two-year cycle this next time around. Um, like, we're not definitively doing a one-year. Um, so do you just want to say that whether it's a one-year or two-year, we align it with the election cycle?
I, I just want to give this a home, so that it doesn't get dropped until next year at election time. Right, so like, does that mean, do we shuffle this to the Policy Subcommittee? Is this a policy, so that we look at it and we bring something forth? Is it something that we, that, like, I, so it doesn't really matter to me what we do with it, as long as it gets a home and somebody gets responsible for it? I think it could be a policy.
I don't know if other districts have a policy on this. Does, uh, Dr. Thompson or Karen from other districts you've been in, are you familiar with any policy on this topic? Dave, you muted.
Trying not to make noise, so. So, I mean, it's usually just, just how we're interpreting a law, there usually is not a policy around it. Um, but we can make, but that doesn't mean the Policy Committee can make recommendations, and not policy too, so, you know. Um, you know, ultimately, I mean, changing the cycle would be difficult, you know, unless it's a two-year, I mean, if it's a two-year cycle, and then you go, instead of going, you know, two full years, you go a year and 10 months and move the evaluation to the end of January or February, which is kind of where most districts have started to move them for exactly this reason. Um, sometime in that March, February, and January timeframe. But, you know, and again, you know, not that I'm campaigning, but, you know, in order to be on a two-year cycle, you have to be proficient or better. Uh, so, you know, but to, to try to do a plan for essentially six or seven months would probably be difficult, so. To change it in this, you kind of need a two-year, it's not like I'm campaigning, but you kind of need a two-year cycle in order to be able to realign things. It's not a full two years, but you shorten one end of it, you know?
I think the other challenge is unique to Norwood, and maybe some other towns, but not everywhere, um, is the way our, our election works is that you, you take office right away. Some other towns, that doesn't happen, you know, there's a couple weeks or months, and there is a more smooth transition, uh, with a number of things, so. Um, so I'm fine, I, I, yeah, Dave.
Um, do we have the option for the new incoming member to abstain from the evaluation process? Because I, I, it's gonna be a bit overwhelming. Um, you know, I, I can't expect anybody that's currently, um, running for office to have watched all of our meetings to be caught up on everything, or has even gone to training to go and evaluate someone, uh, in Dr. Thompson's position.
Yeah, um, I did briefly speak with her yesterday, just to, I didn't want her to watch this meeting and be totally caught off guard and, and feel disrespected in any way. So I just gave her a heads up that this would be discussed. Um, just talking more like the training through MASC, which right now, the MASC is not even offering the orientation, orientation training until September at earliest. And that is dependent on, you know, COVID-19. Um, they canceled their summer ones, and they didn't move the charting of course online. Um, so I did look into that for her. Um, she, yes, she does absolutely have the ability to abstain from it, both, um, submitting an, an individual evaluation, as well as it will be her decision if she even wants to vote on the compilation. Uh, and I wasn't trying to make that decision for her.
I just, I, I don't mean to be in any way disrespectful, but I'm just a little uncomfortable with this conversation. Like, if she's, if she's, and the only reason I'm saying this is if, if Ann Marie is watching, it feels like it's being made clear that people might not think she should do the evaluation, and I don't want her to come on feeling that way. Like, i- it's her decision whether she wants to abstain or she wants to do it. As of June 8th, she will be a duly elected member of this committee. It is entirely in her purview to do the, do the evaluation, and it is entirely in her purview to abstain. So I just feel like having more of a discussion about whether or not she should do it or should abstain is just kind of coloring that conversation in a way that I don't think is fair to her, or to the voter.
That's very valid. Yeah, Dave?
No, I, I agree with you completely. I, I probably was coloring that by my own experience, but I just want to know if she had the option or not. It is her decision, of course.
She does, yes. Okay. So I don't think we want to make any motion, we'll just, um, next week on the, when I say, I don't think we want to make an emotion, saying that's what I'm sensing from the committee, not that I'm telling you you can't make a motion, you can make a motion if you want to, but my, my feeling is that nobody wants to. Um, and this is, this topic is on our agenda for our next meeting in terms of just solidifying, again, the timeline of everything. Um, because Dr. Thompson, as we already established, is supposed to get us his, um, self-assessment by June 30th. Um, I did send out an email, uh, the other day to everybody, not you, Mara, because you won't be on the committee anymore, but about our summer meetings. Um, and we had said, um, July 22nd and, um, August 5th as our summer meetings, um, based off the Doodle Bowl, and, and I did pull an incoming committee member too, to make sure she could be part of those meetings. Uh, so next meeting, we can figure out more of this timeline piece. Is there any other, uh, feedback at this time on, um, individual evals? Okay. So we can, uh, move along. Um, I don't believe we have any donations tonight, right, Dr. Thompson?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so School Committee addenda. Um, Mara, would you like to go first or last tonight?
Uh, last, you know, I always like having the last word.
All right, so I'll let you go last night, I want to give you that option. Um, Dave Batania, did you have anything for our addenda tonight?
I do, if I could go second to last, that would be awesome.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go second to last, but, uh.
Okay, that, that, that's sort of, I'll, I'll go, I'll go now, if that's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Mara, I've been caught flat for a bit, because, uh, I didn't really realize this was your last meeting. You've been with us so long, so, uh, I fortunately was able to pull up the, the speech that I prepared for what I thought was our last meeting, that now lives in the drawer at our office, uh, at our, our, our School Committee meeting room. So bear in mind that there are probably some references in here that refer to these four walls, which are not my house, you've never worked here. Um, and there's nothing behind me on the wall, so bear with me. And, uh, here, here we go. So, and, and, you know, I've been really not saying much in my addendum speeches, because, uh, the connections have been a bit buggy, but fortunately today, my phone really has died, and I'm, now I'm using my landline to make this, so I feel more comfortable with, uh, the quality of the reception. So, uh, here we go. Uh, Mara Smith, we the residents of Norwood, our school Mara Smith, we, the residents of Norwood, our school administrators, faculty and staff, have been both fortunate and blessed by, to be the beneficiaries of your over three years of service on a school committee. Countless hours have been sacrificed by you both here and beyond these four walls. A time that you could have spent with your loved ones and friends, but were instead used to, for the betterment of our proud community. Countless too were your sleepless nights, both before and after difficult decisions that you weighed with both compassion and wisdom. For who among us did not emerge emotionally unscathed from the cuts we were forced to make before the override vote? Mara spoke passionately, night after night, sometimes even to the next day. So she went with rage, powerless to prevent the cuts for our, to our athletics, arts, music and preschool programs. What kind of society do we live in where public servants must battle and beat into submission their own conscience in order to vote in favor of cutting preschool funding? Fortunately, the override did pass and the cuts that we made were restored. Yet less than a year later, our budget battle rages on as unfunded educational mandates continue to chip away at everything we would like to achieve. Mara Smith, it is only fitting that your name and tenure is immortalized on the plaque behind us. An enduring record forever cast in bronze, connecting you to the legacy of all who have served before you and all who will serve after you. What you've helped us build, the golden opportunity granted by good education, will live on in the lives of our students well beyond your years. Mara Smith, we salute you.
I'm not supposed to talk until my agenda, but thank you very much, Dave.
You could probably get away breaking the rules at this point, Mara.
I mean, come on.
Dave, that was, that was very nice. Joan, did you have any agenda this evening?
I do not have anything anywhere near as eloquent as Dave did. But Mara, I, most of my favorite moments, um, of you come from executive session. So I can't like fully share them, but I, it's safe to say I'm going to miss your little ray of sunshine in executive session. And, uh, I, I appreciate the, the leadership. I, I've been on the committee with you for a year, but I appreciate the leadership, um, that you brought and the fact that you were never afraid to voice your, your thoughts and your mind. No matter kind of what the consequences were, no matter how often, um, it may have gone either against the grain of, you know, what was being said or, or, or may have made folks a little bit uncomfortable who were presenting to us. You asked the hard questions and you weren't afraid to ask us. Um, and so I will both miss your, your, your ray of sunshine in executive session. Um, and I will miss your hard headed, your hard hitting, but, um, so needed questions in, in the public session, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Joan. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Joan. Maya, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do, so, um, at first I want to acknowledge that today is June 3rd. So exactly a year ago tonight, um, I was standing at town hall with some of you and with one Norwood and with Jody Smith from the Teachers Union and with members of the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom, and we were celebrating, you know, a vote of confidence, you know, that our town wanted to support education and, um, was willing to commit to that. And, um, I want to acknowledge, um, everyone who participated in that, especially the one Norwood campaign group and, um, and especially Mara on that. Because, um, I know that, uh, Mara's belief in, uh, the need for an override was part of what motivated her to run for the committee in the first place, as it did me. And, um, I think Mara, like, had a real contribution to that. Your perspective as both a former student and as a town meeting member, your skills at presenting information, telling a story and knowing what people really want to know, were hugely valuable to the committee and therefore to the North Public Schools as a whole. And, um, I, on a personal level, have enjoyed working with you and, um, I'll miss having you on the committee with us. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Maya. So a lot of people have already shared a lot of what I wanted to say, but, uh, Mara, I, I did write something, I'm just going to read it, um, both for you and then on one other issue, so, so bear with me, everybody. But first, Mara, I will miss working with you. I'm grateful for all the hard work and direction that you provided over the last three years. Uh, you were instrumental, along with Maya last year on the budget subcommittee and on the BBC, um, really advocating successfully for the override. You helped transform how we have the conversations with the community around the budget and that was no easy task. Uh, you've always been an advocate first and foremost for student achievement. As Joan already alluded to, uh, you ask a lot of hard questions and you hold all of us, uh, accountable to answer those questions comprehensively. I know that there are many initiatives you've helped to start in advance that I promise you will absolutely continue, at least as long as I am on this committee, I will continue to advocate those things. Three years ago in February, when I decided to run for the school committee, I did not know you. I only knew your name. I quickly met you when you and I both had the same idea to go to like every single PTO meeting in February and March. And, um, I think the first one we went to was at the Coke League and you introduced yourself and you started to talk about your goals. And I just very quickly realized that, um, we kind of shared a brain in many ways. And you were saying things that I was looking down on saying and I was like, man, just hold my thunder. But I realized right away that you were somebody that I, I wanted to work with. And it's many times in the last three years, I've just been very grateful for you as well as the other people, um, around the table. Obviously, we're not all around the same table, you know, Dave Patania, as you said, we're, we're doing this remote. But I'm grateful for you, I'm grateful for all of you tonight. I will miss you, I know you're not disappearing, I still have your number, don't change that, I'll still bug you about other things. And I have no doubt that whatever next endeavor, um, you're going to continue to advocate and you're going to continue, excuse me, going to continue to make the world a better place. Which does bring me to my second topic, uh, briefly, which is heavier. But I do want to make a statement on making the world a better place. And, um, I do want to thank Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyatt and the leadership team for that letter that, uh, Dr. Thompson read tonight and that was sent out yesterday. Leadership, true and strong leadership, requires a lot of compassion and the willingness to have hard conversations and do really hard work. It won't speak for too long because this isn't about me, but I do want to unequivocally state that Black Lives Matter. I may not have the same lived experience as all of our students, staff and community members, but I promise to listen. I promise to continue to learn and improve and to help create and uphold safe and empowering spaces in all the ways that I can. Education is not immune to racism and it's not immune to the challenges of society. And as educators and leaders in a school district, we absolutely must be willing to do the hard work. And one of our five strategic objectives is focused on safe and supportive schools. We have declared already that through the implementation of social emotional learning, we, North Public Schools, will create a culture of care, inclusion and safety for every student and their family in Norwood. It's necessary for all of us that we are educated in not only cultural competence and tolerance, but that we are also trauma informed. We need to actively demonstrate and advance our values of diversity, equity and equality. As I said in my speech for graduation last weekend, this world absolutely needs people to be courageous and resilient. And I ask all of you, my colleagues and all in our community in Norwood, to hold me accountable if there's something more that I should be doing in this role in this school committee. So, thank you. But now, Mara Smith, last words. Agenda for tonight.
This is very weird. No, I'd like to start off actually just by saying congratulations to the class of 2020. You graduated, um, on Sunday. And I, you know, on my run, I go up by the high school very often. And I was up there on Sunday and I saw all the, the amazing signs that folks had put out. And as I was running up Nickel Street, which is a joy in and of itself, it's a steep hill. I was very heartened by all of the, the people who live along the route who had taken the time to go out and decorate so that the, it would be a really special moment for the, for the students, for their families, for, you know, the whole community. And I think that that whole experience really sums up what Norwood is and what makes Norwood special. That there's never really a question of, can we do it? It's just, well, we're going to do it and we're going to make it incredibly special and we're going to take care of everybody along the way. And I think that, you know, there's that, that whole adage of it takes a village, but I think that Norwood is a really special village. And it's been, you know, a real honor and a privilege for me to be in this seat, both at the Savage and this, this chair at home, which doesn't quite tip as much as the Savage ones do. But, you know, uh, for the last three years and I, I hope, um, and I, I've, I've, um, you know, always strived to be a voice for students, for families and, um, you know, to advocate as best as I can. So I, I hope that I have, have achieved that, which I, which I set out to do. I, I was, it was, it was funny, something that, that Dave said in his, his agenda really, really stuck with, there was a lot of things that stuck with me. It was all very, very sweet, whichever one, everyone has said. But Dave said that I, I could have been home with my, my friends and, and my loved ones and I would actually sort of, sort of say that I was just here with my friends. It's been a real lovely time getting to know all of you and all of the people who have been on the committee through all the, the previous years that I've been on it. And it's been a real joy getting to know you all and, and getting to work with you. I guess it's just my, my final thing that I'll say is, I, I've, I've been reading, if you, people who know me know that I, I read very long and intense, uh, history books. And I'm, I'm currently reading a book, um, that talks about John Gilbert Winnett, who was the, uh, American ambassador to, um, Great Britain during World War II. And he gave a, a speech, uh, memorializing President Roosevelt after Roosevelt's passing. And he said something that just really stuck with me, that even in the darkest days of the depression and the black days of World War II, he never lost hope, hope that things would be better. And I think that that's one thing that's really struck me with this committee is that we always have hope, that no matter what, we can make it better. And no matter what the situation, we will find a way to help in ways that, that people need to be helped. And I think that that's a real testament to this committee, to this school system and to the people, um, within it. So I would just like to say thank you for entrusting me to, to be a part of it for these last three years. I will definitely not say goodbye, because I have, I have no doubt that this is the last you'll, you'll hear from me. But, uh, and then just on a personal note, I do have to say, because I was, I was told I had to, uh, thank you to my, my lovely wife, who for these past three years had to deal with me coming home very wound up. And she would be like, stop, have a cup of tea and go to bed. So thank you to, to Kate Smith for, for dealing with me for three years. Thank you for all, with to all of you.
Thank you, Mara.
Yeah, thank you, Mara, for all you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's so weird, like, this remote thing always, especially now, because like, I really want to come over and give you a hug, but.
I know.
But it's safe to do so. So, um, we do have to enter into executive session this evening, but not you, Mara Smith. You get to, uh, to sign off on this, since we are talking about, um, contract negotiations. So I, I need a motion, uh, to enter into executive session. Uh, we will only be resuming, um, to adjourn the meeting.
So move. It's the last time I get to do it, so move.
So motion, my Mara is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Maya, and I do need to poll everybody individually, so Joan?
What happens if one of us says no? I'm just.
I don't know. Figure that out tonight.
All right, yes, yes.
That a yes, Joan?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Mara?
Yes.
Dave, Patania?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so I will see you all in executive session. To everyone else, have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.